Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session, Tuesday, September 17th. Before we get to our agenda this afternoon, we have a presentation of the new Uptown Director.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Jill Ackerman, President of the Marion Chamber, and we wanted to bring Lacey to the council meeting to officially introduce her, although many of you have met her already, introduce her to Team Marion, as well as to anybody that might be watching. She's just got a little under a month under her belt, but she has a really interesting background. She's got an MBA, but she also has owned two businesses, so she's an entrepreneur. And then she worked as the Executive Assistant to the Principal for City View High School. So she's got a lot of grant administrative, administration experience, budget experience, and just has a really good background that we think will serve our organization very well. So I'm gonna let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Greetings, Mayor and Council, and Team Marion. Thank you for having me today. I am very excited to be here and very excited to support the ongoing efforts to just continue to make Marion a place where people want to be. One thing that really excited me about this position in particular is the commitment and investment in the community. And as somebody who lives in Cedar Rapids but makes the choice to come here frequently, it was something that I could not pass up, and I am so delighted to be here today and stand in front of you.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Welcome to Team Marion, and my apologies, I have not had a chance to meet you. I missed the open houses that were hosted for you. I was out of town, but I look forward to working with you. And you're housed in the Marion Chamber offices, right?
Correct, yep.
So can you, for those like me who haven't met you, I'm sure it's a lot of drinking from, as they say, the fire hose, but like what has your first month looked like for Marion, for you?
So this was not a position where I was able to just ease in and take my time, getting to know the position itself, the organization. I just had to jump in, and all hands on deck, boots hit the ground running. In this first four weeks, I have successfully submitted our challenge grant application for the Owen Block, which was a huge endeavor. I had not worked within that system, the Iowa Grant System, and had not met the owners prior to submitting the grant. So that took a big chunk of my time, which was getting to know the property, getting to know the history, the needs for the renovation, and what the business owner's goals were. And we were successful in getting that presented to the state. And we will hear back from Iowa Grants, I believe, either on the 15th, I think it's the 15th of October, whether or not we've been awarded. Other things that I've done besides learn Main Street Iowa has been just supporting other, or supporting local business owners, talking with the cattle camps who own Scout and the Draper House. We are going to seek an amendment for their challenge grant to extend their timeline. They have some construction things that are going to take longer. So I met with Main Street Iowa and the cattle camps to figure out how to do that. We also welcomed Sarah Lemke from Main Street Iowa's Des Moines office to come and walk through the Canaan Building, which you might know as the Marion Chocolate Shop. And we are very close to submitting our final reimbursement claim for that, which is so exciting to see that that project, I mean, Ben has really turned that one around very quickly. And he is very close to seeking occupancy for his second apartment above the chocolate shop. What else have we done? So many things. We have upcoming, I am preparing for our October 8th Main Street America accreditation visit. This is our, technically, our off year, so they are preparing us for our on-year, which will be 2026. And we are working through the new transformational strategies, which are new standards that Iowa needs to come in compliance with. I kind of feel like I'm hopping in at that at a perfect time. I am not super familiar with the old standards as they were. So my, all my training is within those new standards, which I feel like is a bit of advantage to my peers who are trying to come up to date. They don't, I don't have to relearn anything. It's all new information to me.
Steve.
Yeah, Lacey, again, I was able to meet you about a month ago, so welcome.
Thank you.
I think your position, in my opinion, is very important to the city, Marion. You're gonna have obviously, obviously, a lot of interaction with a lot of people that are in this room. We're gonna be seeing a lot of you at different meetings. And again, you're involved in a lot of key events and the Uptown area. So to me, this is an important position. I don't want to overstress that, but I think it's been a position that is very important to the city. And so we look forward to your continued success in this position.
Thank you. It's been stressed to me by Main Street Iowa that Marion is a very high-performing community. So I am aware that I have big shoes to fill, and I hope that I will do a wonderful job, and I'm doing my best, and I'm very excited about our future as being.
Speaking of the shoes that she is filling, as you all know, Brooke loved to dress up for our events, and Lacey's no different. She's gonna be wearing an official drindle from Germany this weekend at Oktoberfest, so I'll hope to see everybody there on Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next presentation is Central Plaza. Jake.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jacob Hahn, Deputy City Engineer. Unfortunately, due to an illness, Louis with render neck was not able to join me today for this presentation, but he and I worked together to develop these slides, so I'm comfortable taking it on from here. First, I'll go over some of the completed items that occurred at the Central Plaza in the last two weeks to a couple of months here. One of the major items that was completed was the ice loop transmission lines. That's kind of the pink line work you might see along the right side of the screen. That basically carries the refrigerant from the chillers that will be in the depot addition to, to the ice loop to make ice. So getting that underground work completed was a big milestone for Render Neck. They've also completed a lot of the site electrical rough end work for the onsite lighting, as well as the water feature splash pad area. Another major milestone for them was to complete the underground utility work with inside the depot itself and pour that slab on grade, so they can start going up with some of the new vertical walls, as well as the door frame setting within, inside the depot itself. Items currently under construction, as you can see in the picture, they've started doing the concrete masonry walls with inside the depot for not only the restrooms, but the shared rentable space. The ice loop interior wall excavation is occurring right now, as well as some of the other major ice loop mechanical installations near the addition area. Upcoming items, and I got kind of some dates on these as well. One of the bigger ones for the ice loop construction itself would be the interior ice loop curbs, as well as the slab on grade. The curbs are scheduled to be poured actually next week, the 25th on that one, as well as the depot mezzanine floor and the addition slab on grade floors. Those are scheduled to be poured next week. So those are a couple of other major milestones upcoming that will help keep this project on schedule. Also, just a heads up, eventually, we'll need to get into Sixth Avenue to redo some of the work at 11th Street, as far as like where the construction entrance is right now. That'll probably occur maybe six weeks to a month from now, and there'll be some traffic drills set up on Sixth Avenue to basically shift traffic to the center turn lane to reduce it to one lane in each direction. So that will be upcoming in the next few weeks or so on that one. And final items, some of the major long lead type items are starting to take shape. Light poles, current estimated arrival for that is November, so that's good. They'll give us enough time to get those installed yet this year. The chiller and refrigeration item package, I know that was kind of a big topic early on as well. That's currently scheduled for mid-October delivery as well, so that's on time and on schedule. And some of the other major ones that are actually already on site, sunshades, the play structure itself, as well as the ice loop pumps. So having those on sites, they're sitting there ready to be installed when the site's ready for them. So that's good news. And as always, for everybody watching, listening, you can stay informed. I've got the link there on the screen. You can support the campaign. We have that live feed that takes a picture about every eight minutes onsite, as well as you can sign up for the construction updates that I just sent out this last one today as well. Going forward, we're looking to do these updates about every month until the project's substantially complete. Just a quick reminder, the contract completion date is actually Christmas Eve. Currently, right now, the schedule has substantial completion targeted for the 18th of December. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can. If not, I'll follow up with an email to the group if I need to get with Louis on any specific questions.
What about the refrigeration equipment for the ice skating? Is that still?
That was that chiller package, so that's mid-October. Yep, that's when it's supposed to get arrival onsite, so that meets our schedule, yep.
Good.
Steve. So the good news is I'm hearing the project is on schedule. One question I've talked to a few people about, and I've got it on a personal, it's my personal question as well, and that is, I know we got all the fencing around there, but when it comes time to put up our even bigger Christmas tree this year, are we gonna be able to put that up somewhere, or where's that gonna be? Do we know that yet? Maybe you don't have the answer.
I don't have the answer to that right now. That's something to coordinate with Parks on that.
Parks?
We've got options, so we're kinda waiting to see.
Okay.
I kind of, yeah. I'm gonna guess we need to do some coordination here as we get closer along as well with the early December Christmas in the park as well with the, with the chamber.
Because I know we've got an even bigger tree to put up this year, which I'm absolutely, I'm not looking forward to winter yet, but when we put that tree up, I will be excited to have that in our park.
It's kind of a, you know, see how far we can get in the next month or so and go from there.
Jake, what, what kind of a commissioning and turnover process do you foresee? And I guess back to the chiller equipment and the ice loop, how long will that commissioning activity take? Obviously, testing, piping integrity, all that stuff, but then laying in the chiller and getting it operable. When will that occur, and about how long do you think that activity would take?
I'm gonna need to follow up with you on that one, Grant. I'll get with Louis and get you a note on that.
Anybody?
Okay, thanks.
You just asked my question. Who else?
Can you go back to the slide where you have the inside pictures?
The depot?
Of the depot?
This one?
Yeah. Is that, is there still going to be a second level? This is just, this is just part of the, what we're getting ready for, right?
So what you're looking at here would be, you'd be sitting in the event rentable space, and you'd be looking, that's essentially the west wall that, so then the mezzanine would be right above that where the guys are, that's pretty much the top of their wall. And so next week, we'd be looking to pour that mezzanine floor on top. So this picture was taken middle of last week, so.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jake.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have Kim. With an update on the housing rehabilitation program.
Good afternoon. I am happy to introduce Tracy Agabak from our East Central Government Cog, which is, Tracy's has a lot of housing experience. She presented about six months ago. If you recall, we took, council designated $530,000 towards owner-occupied housing program. So this is part of our process to walk through and update you as to what that progress is. So Tracy, we'll take it from here. Mayor?
Hi, Tracy.
Hi.
So I have Mark Culver with me as well. He's the Housing Inspector for EC cog, the main one. We actually have two now, but he's the main person. And he's been involved with the Marion Housing Rehab. And I think last time, there were a few construction questions that, of course, are beyond my capabilities. So do they have the slides up there? Do I need to? Oh, we're, okay, there's the arrow. There we go. Okay, so a few of these will look similar, but I just wanted for those watching and for the council's benefit, just to go over again. So as Kim said, the $530,000 that you, as the city of Marion obligated of your ARPA funds toward an owner-occupied rehab program, and you gave it to the Housing Fund for Lynn County, which I'm the Executive Director of that. Kim is a wonderful board member. And, you know, the, the Housing Fund for Lynn County, I'm gonna touch on it after I talk, after we talk about the rehab program, just because Mayor Nick asked me something the last time, just about in general with the Housing Trust Fund. So I do want to cover a few numbers that I've, I've gathered today about the work that we've done in Marion. But, so we use a local match to be able to, right now, I'm preparing the Housing Trust Fund grant application that's due October 1st, and we have to have a significant amount of local match in order to apply for those Housing Trust Fund dollars. We are the only entity in Lynn County that can do that as the Certified Housing Trust Fund. But using your $530,000, I used part of it last year toward, as to show as local match for our, my IFA application. I'm using part of it again this year as local match for another year of IFA funding. But your $530,000 is covering the construction costs or the work done on each of the homes, and then, of course, the administration and construction management. So just to recap, the income levels that are shown up there are actually the ones that, because those were changed in April of this year. However, when we income qualified people for this program, the ones that are participating right now are meeting those criteria. If we extend the program, we might be able to do one or two more homes, then those income levels would be a little bit higher than those. For instance, a single person now at 80% median income is $56,300, and a four-person household is $80,400. So they've gone up a little bit. If you remember, your criteria for the program was $20,000 in grant assistance per property. 60% of it was intended to be used for exterior and 40% for interior, and Mark's very mindful of that and watchful of that. You also will expand an additional 5,000 if the homeowners are willing to match that 5,000, whatever the amount over the 20,000 is needed, the homeowner would be expected to match that. And I think we've had that happen once, if I'm remembering correctly, right?
No, we, we have not had that happen yet. One thing that you're probably thinking of is 60-40 split, because we can, the maximum we can spend inside is 40%. And we had one where the interior rehab was more, so we had the homeowner pay that above and beyond the 40% of the interior.
Because they could choose to not do it, or if they wanted to have it done while other work was being done. So right now, there are 13 projects that are completed. Three are in the construction phase, and, and we prepared this last week, so I don't know if there's more than that right now in the construction phase. Okay, so the total amount of your dollars that have been paid out so far have been $235,758. $229,699 of that is construction. $17,457 is administration, but of course, a lot of that goes to the construction management. So, you know, Mark goes to a home, he inspects it, determines what should be done with the homeowner's input and, and his knowledge, and then writes the specs, puts it out to bid to, you know, puts it out available to contractors to, to provide bids, and then follows up and, and deals, and kind of the go-between between the homeowners and the contractors, and then gets final approval on all of the projects from everybody. So we have $294,242 remaining of your Marion funds. We have 11 obligated projects right now, so, and then we have 24 people on a waitlist. We have stopped taking phone calls from people and putting them on the waitlist because it just, you know, we have 24. That's a significant number. So no matter how, even though we have limits to how much we can do, and, you know, we'll be able, it seems, to be, do more than the 11 that are obligated. We don't really know until we get, you know, the official bids back on all of the properties. Will we know exactly how much money we have to work with? But I think we're thinking one or two more maybe beyond that, depending on how projects come in. And because we have, we have homeowners on the waitlist, they have not been income, determined to be income-eligible yet. They're, they've just been put on the waitlist at this point. And then we'll go down that road once we, we need to. We'll follow up with the homeowners, find out if they're still interested in the program. So then these are some of Mark's before and after pictures. I prefer you talk about them, because you know more than I do.
Sure. So the, the blue ones on the left, obviously windows before and after on that property. We also did a new furnace on that one, so we had quite a bit of change for her on that. The middle ones, sidewalk, that's right out going to their garage. And so they, she had an elderly father who had a lot of issues with that, so that really helped out in order to make that more accessible for them. And then the, the third one is, that's a city sidewalk, actually, along the street. And so that was in need of repair as well. On the left there, they had a lot of, you can't really tell from, from the top picture, but the bottom picture on the left, you can kind of see an angle coming down. The driveway actually goes downhill, and then the garage is down there. So they're having water issues getting in there. So there was, had been kind of ponding there where the crack was, so we kind of cut that out, put drainage across there with a pipe going down around to keep that water from infiltrating into the house or into the garage. Now, the, the next set, the foundation repair, that one, they had a solar panel there, so I couldn't get a great picture of the before, but there was a lot, there was actually animals getting inside their foundation. So it was pretty bad. So a lot of issues there, and they have reported that they do not have an infestation problem anymore. They had lots of mice in their house before, and so that has since gone away ever since that repair's been done. Window replacement there again, we actually did quite a bit of windows on that home. And you can see that is a very large window, and those kind of head up pretty quick.
So, and I have to apologize, some of the pictures aren't, you know, don't show a lot, but I, I like to be mindful of the homeowner's houses. And since this is a public meeting, I kind of wanted to use pictures that wouldn't automatically, "Oh, yeah, I know who that person is," and so I apologize about that. So the, one of the other things that I just wanted to mention was about the Housing Trust Fund. Well, first of all, do you have questions for Mark or I about the housing rehab program?
If you've shared it, I'm sorry if I've forgotten, but remind us, is there a required match on the part of the homeowner? None. Okay. And is there a requirement that they, that the house remain owner-occupied for a certain period of time? So they could fix it up, and then it becomes rental the next day?
That was something that the city, I think, had talked about and decided not to do. That was something that I know we, I talked about with Kesha, you know, that that could be something. I think one of the things that you have to think about, Mayor, is that you're at least fixing up the house too, you know, for the next person.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah.
But I, I can note on that, as far as the ones that have been assisted so far, I have, I do reach, I kind of keep in contact a little bit, and none of them have, have flipped them, if you will. So they are all still the original owners in there from when the rehab work was done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, one of our overall goals is to encourage keeping up the stock of owner-occupied homes. You know, I think generally landlords can fix up houses on their own without the help of the city, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for future, I think, so. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious how many of these projects, just looking at the different, different types and seeing some of the trends, how many of these projects were, were needed based off impacts from the derecho, if any?
We didn't have any direct deracial impacted ones. Some of them may have been accelerated, but there were no, we need a roof because it got blown off, or, but some of them were accelerated, you know, a lot of windows and doors may have been tweaked a little bit, but they were, I don't recall any direct deracial impacted homes that, or main causes.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I was just curious, so thank you.
But that's a great segue into, can I just finish up, Mayor, just with a little bit? So the patch program, you know, the one that helps homeowners impacted by deracial was run through the Housing Fund for Lynn County as well. The city of Cedar Rapids had given us $1 million. Lynn County had given us $1 million. And then the Cedar Rapids Community Foundation and United Way of East Central Iowa had both given, well, a total of $1.4 million. So we had about $3.4 million to expend. We're almost done obligating all of that, that money. But I asked Nicole, who does the patch program, to look at how many Marion properties we have assisted in the patch program, so the deracial impacted. And we've actually expended in Marion of those dollars, and of course, these would be county dollars and the private dollars, because city of Cedar Rapids funding would go within the city limits of Cedar Rapids. But we have assisted 33 homes or mobile homes in Marion, and that totaled $381,383. So there's been a lot of them that were maybe assisted through that program. And then the other thing, because of Mayor Nick's question last time, that, I don't know, I didn't understand, but the Housing Trust Fund has utilized our funding along with other funding. And we have actually, I went back and started with my 2020 IFA grant, so I can apply every year, 2020, and usually those are open two or three years. So I started with my 2020 grant, and starting with that, we have expended $356,780 in Marion, and that has assisted 20 households. 10 of those have been through rent assistance given to Willis Stady or Waypoint. That's a little over $8,300. We have done owner-occupied rehab through our own Federal Home Loan Bank grant that we get, and that was for four homeowners, $71,726. We have a small emergency repair program where we've set aside funds to be able to help people of low-dimined income. And that, we have expended $1,700 to assist two homes in Marion. And then, of course, the, the Medco homes, the buyers that have gotten down payment assistance, just starting with the 2020 grant, there, there's been 45,000 total, three buyers assisted. And then new construction, we provided a 1% loan to the Tulip Tree property, the one that just had their open house, the 36 rental units. And then Habitat also had a, had a, I think, a celebration of their house, and we gave a 0% loan to them for $30,000. And so all of that totals $356,780, which I think was your question last time that I couldn't answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
So we do a lot of work in Marion, so.
Appreciate all the work you do. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, you are so welcome. Thank you for being here and giving us an update. I do want to just add a little, add just a little more information of things that, that we've been kind of exploring internally. As you heard Tracy talk about the housing needs that we have in our community, not only new construction, but when you're thinking about rehabilitation, and we think about our older housing stock, what are some of those things that we as a city can be proactive in? And we have a lot of partners. You just heard some of those tonight with Patch and, and so on. We have started just internally, having some meetings to kind of explore, what are some of those things that, that we could do as a community and as a city? With that, you know, we've, you heard Mark Sekman also talk about, when he did his annual report, he'd also talked about some of the housing strategies and, and what our business, community is looking for. And certainly, it is about that essential housing, affordable housing for the employees that work for legacy and so on. And so those are some of the things that we have had some conversations along with the chamber as well, and Will and Gage have been a part of some of that exploration as we talk to our trades, as we talk to... to, um, the state of Iowa and some of those programs also at the federal level, whether that's, um, you know, CDBG, housing rehab dollars or what that might be. So as we continue to explore and think proactively about our older housing stock and, and getting ahead of it, even, um, engaging with Marion Independent School District too, and understanding what the needs of the families that, that also attend, um, Marion School District and what they're seeing. Um, you know, kiddos and turnover, they're seeing, you know, 40% of turnover, kid, kiddos moving in and out of the district. So what does that really look like? So we have a lot to explore and it's a big, it's a big topic. Um, and so we are starting to work and try to break those down so that we can come back to you at a later date and strategize about how we'd like to move forward.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have Chief Fagan. EMS system.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm excited to, to give an update this evening on two projects in motion. Uh, the first one is the EMS system study and the second one is our standards of cover of, uh, study as well. Setting the stage for this, these really began, uh, almost two years ago, um, in the fall of 22 with our action plan as a department. At that time, we talked about, uh, the need for some community research to establish what is the future look like in regards to the services provided by the department. Uh, and in, in order to do that, we needed to perform community study. As a follow-up to that, uh, formalizing our strategic direction came out of the community driven strategic plan, which happened the, the next spring, in the spring of 23. And so out of that, we had a strategic initiative, which was to identify the scope and level of services provided by the fire department to inform departmental planning to ensure that we meet the expectations of our residents and businesses. And so today I'm happy to provide an update on two projects that are underway. Again, these are coming out of projects in motion. The first one is an EMS system study. This was a competitive RFP, uh, that was put out, uh, earlier this summer. Uh, we received three bids. Ultimately, the, uh, the bid was awarded to a public consulting group, um, at a cost of $44,750 within the budget. Um, the selection of this was done internally, uh, with the diverse representation within the organization evaluating the cost and the value provided to the community. Uh, this is a project completion, uh, date in February 2025. So the project is about six months. Uh, and based on the purchasing threshold and our policies, this was something that the city manager was able to authorize without bringing to council uh, for authorization. So we did follow purchasing policies on that. So in regards to an update on the timeline for that, so we had an executive orientation, um, just last month towards the end of August there, um, meeting the team, uh, engaging with, uh, some stakeholders at that time. And so now we are at the point to where they are heavily involved in data collection, uh, meeting and interviewing stakeholders uh, throughout the community, including our partners, uh, such as area ambulance, um, the city of Cedar Rapids Fire Department, um, other agencies as well. And so they're on site beginning today, tomorrow, uh, and, uh, the 19th, so on Thursday. And tomorrow, uh, keynote for everyone that's listening, um, we do have a public engagement opportunity in person at Fire Station One, um, from five to seven PM for you to come and engage directly with the consultants with PCG. There is also a second opportunity to provide community input through an online survey that is available on the city's website. And so that is something that we've shared in a media release of, about a month ago. And then we have also put that out in regards to the survey that is now available beginning today. And that survey will be open through the rest of this month. So by the winter, uh, we should have, uh, some key findings that are identified by the consultant and a draft report. And then the final report and presentation will be provided in the spring of next year, uh, right on the heels of that February timeline. And really the scope of this project is to provide options. Some key findings that are identified by the consultants from the entire EMS system. And this is intended from the nine one one call all the way to the transfer of patient care to the hospital and everything in between. And so where are there opportunities for consideration for, uh, for improvement as we move into the future? So before I move into the second project, is there any questions pertaining to the EMS system study? Because we're going to transition to the standards of cover next.
Randy, you can.
Okay. So the next almost simultaneous study that is going to begin, uh, here later this month is our standards of cover. And this is the document that I've talked about in the past, also originating back to the fall of, uh, 2022 in our action plan. This is the all hazards assessment where we evaluate the unique risks, hazards within the city of Marion, evaluate the, the systems that are in place to deploy and respond to those, those hazards and risks and evaluate where gaps may exist to identify opportunities for improvement in the future. This is much more broad than just the EMS system, uh, includes fire suppression, technical rescue hazardous materials response. And so it is more, uh, broad, all encompassing. Um, that, that project, um, is within budget, uh, 38,000 budgeted. Uh, it is being facilitated by the Center for Public Safety Excellence. Uh, this was a single source, uh, procurement, uh, based on how that project, um, aligns with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International Core Competency specifically within category two, which we've talked about before. This is a little bit longer project. This project will last nine months, uh, with the completion in May of next year. And that presentation would come right on the heels of that. So the timeline on that, uh, and next steps, um, we have an executive orientation with them on the 20th. We actually have them coming on site, uh, at the end of this month to provide standards of cover training to our team. Um, what's really neat about that and, uh, and I, um, I'm excited about is that we're working very closely uh, with our partners with the Cedar Rapids Fire Department. Uh, they are an accredited agency, but I know that they are in a transition period with their accreditation manager. And so we're including them with our work so we can work and create some synergies as we look at risk even broadly, uh, from a regional approach and not just solely within the city of Marion. But public health will also be a part of that. Of course, our partners with CDIT, GIS, uh, MCOM with the dispatch, uh, as well. So, um, but here is a, is, there is a timeline of some key benchmarks as we move, move through this work uh, with the final presentation coming in the summer of 2025. And so the last slide here is really talking about next steps for both of these studies. Um, the first one being the EMS study, the stakeholder engagement is really beginning right now. Um, I know that the consultants were meeting with duty crews today with the fire department and they were meeting with area ambulance, uh, later this afternoon. I think, uh, they have a meeting with MCOM tomorrow. So they're in the process of data collection, uh, and really gathering information to really inform the study. The standards of cover, as I mentioned, the team Marion instruction that's being provided by CPSC, um, is coming just here in about two weeks, um, September 30th through October 2nd. And really the key next steps on there on really that next task for us is that community profile, what is a risk assessment methodology, and then the critical tasking for our deployment. So with that, is there any questions about either one of the projects that are, that are rolling?
Questions?
Okay. Lastly, just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just again, want to plug the opportunity for public engagement. There's two, two ways to provide input uh, for the EMS system study. The first one is in person tomorrow evening at Fire Station One between five and seven PM. Uh, and then also there's a, an online community survey that's available through the city's website. And it's about 10 questions to where the community, anybody in the community can provide input in that way. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next we have a discussion on 31st Street Sidewalk Project.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Greg Anis. I'm a project manager here for the city and I just want to provide an update on the 31st Street Sidewalk from Eighth Avenue or 24th or 25th Avenue. Just want to provide some background on the project. Uh, this started out as a resident petition to the TAC committee. Uh, they recommended a CIP project and that got approved this spring for fiscal year 2026. Uh, so city staff went out this spring and collected, uh, field survey, uh, data and information. I took that data and information and did a preliminary design. The design included an alignment, uh, project limits and an initial, uh, preliminary cost estimate. That preliminary cost estimate was around 800,000 for the whole segment between Eighth Avenue and, or Eighth Ave and 25th Ave. Uh, it was approved for fiscal year 26 for 500,000. A lot of factors go into this cost estimate. Some of the factors are shown here. Um, there are existing utilities that need to be relocated as a part of this project. Here's some storms here are shown on the left. Uh, there are some heavy skewed intersections, uh, like the intersection shown on the right. That's McGowan and 31st Street. Um, these increase the pavement removal and replacement limits, driving up that cost a little bit. Here are some more pictures of the narrow right away and existing landscaping, steep slopes and, uh, more utilities. Uh, these increased driveway removal limits further driving up that cost and take a little bit more time for some of those utility relocates. So because of this 500,000 that was approved in the CIP and, um, the initial cost estimate of 800,000, uh, staff is recommending phasing out this, uh, section of sidewalk. The Tavi Park phase from McGowan intersection to 25th, uh, would serve some of, uh, the residents' requests for access to Tavi Park. And then future phases would go from Eighth Avenue to South McGowan, uh, to fill up that entire segment. And that, those are estimated at 300,000 and 500,000. Here are some aerial views that kind of show those, uh, phasing, or that phasing, that, uh, first Tavi Park phase from, um, McGowan Boulevard to 25th Ave. Um, 25th Ave is where the next segment of sidewalk is on the west side. And then future phasing from Eighth to McGowan, kind of the larger section of the two. Now I'll hand this off to Ken.
Perfect. Thank you. So as you know, this is a project that came through us through TAC and, uh, petition from residents in the area. With that, then we created, uh, the CIP project as Greg was talking about. And then as we went through the CIP projects last year, um, council had designated this as a priority project and we understand that it is a priority project. Um, due to, at the time we were putting the numbers together, it was one of those things that we didn't have quite all the details. And that is, you know, part of why you're seeing, um, the increase in costs. Because in the CIP we had for, or 500,000, we're looking at an overall, um, $800,000 project. With that being said, we also looked big picture, you know, we didn't put our blinders on and engineering took, okay, if we're going to do this, how are we going to do it? And how are we going to do it right? So this is why you're seeing, um, the detail that you're seeing tonight, along with when we're looking at those numbers do, in phasing, phasing, uh, those out, um, as we, as we move along. We will continue, um, continue to finalize the design and think about what, you know, the bid process of that. But as we're looking at those, the sidewalks and the detail, as you, as you know, there are residents along the area, mostly in the second phase of the project. With that being, with that said, we also understand that we have done a variety of things over the years, over the past years, when it's come to sidewalks to whether or not we, um, have assessed them, whether we've paid for them ourselves. Um, however, we've done a variety of things. We don't, uh, our policy, written policy, we have past practices, but we do not have a policy in place. So that's something due to some of the, the questions that we received. I mean, knowing that this is a fairly large project, that we would really like to work on that sidewalk policy as well and can, and work through this concurrently. Um, so that we really do have the policies set in place and we know what the, what our expectations, um, of staff along with uh, the residents that are along this project way. Um, certainly if you have some thoughts or anything.
Direction you're looking for?
We would like to continue to move forward with the final design and, um, and together work through the sidewalk policy and then figure out what that bidding process would look like. Um, this policy may take us a little bit longer, um, depending on how in-depth we want to get with the sidewalk policy. Um, it, we can still be teed up for fiscal year, uh, 26. Um, however, it may be that we would do it a little later in that, in fiscal year 26.
See, I might have a question. I'm sorry, the, this lost me because I'm tracking this on my computer on my map and here. So we looked at going south at the kind of offset intersection and now we're looking to go north first instead. Right? Is that what we're hearing?
Do you want to pull up the visuals?
And starting on the call of the north working south instead of south working north? I don't know. I'm probably the only one confused as I was looking at the map, but as I'm tracking this and then I'm looking because there are some sidewalks on the other side of the street. So we're moving them to, we're looking to put them on the west side as well.
Correct.
Yeah. So Sarah, when we put the project together, we looked at the whole thing. So we looked at from Eighth Avenue to 25th. So it wasn't necessarily a north side or south side. We just looked at the whole thing because that's where the gap is.
Okay.
So there's, if you go north of 25th on the west side, there's sidewalk that already, when you get down to eight, there's sidewalk that you connect to. So what is that total gap? Seeing that that was $800,000 over our $500,000 budget, where does it make sense? So we know that we've heard from residents and being at the farmer's market myself, knowing that there's not a place to get there without sidewalk on the west side. We knew that the Tavi section was the most prime location.
So you're telling me I'm understanding engineering speak the best today. So we've hit a different space in life right now. Got it.
You know, I know we had, you, we were presented the sidewalk study, uh, several weeks ago. And I know going forward, that obviously identified probably a hundred miles of, of sidewalk that could be identified as possible replacement for the city. Now I also know that here, this project here is $800,000 for basically a mile of sidewalk. Now I know going in the future, that is not going to be the cost uh, of a typical sidewalk project, because this one has the sewer, it's got a lot of utility lines included in it and so forth. So as we go forward, uh, I'm sure you, as we start talking about how to budget money for sidewalks, uh, I think you have to educate us on what is the normal cost for a mile of sidewalk or a quarter mile sidewalk or, or whatever. So to me, I know this is kind of the, the most expensive area sidewalk, which is probably, probably why we're backing off on it. But I do think we are picking at least the right segment, uh, for this project, getting it done from 25th Avenue, including Tavi Park to McGowan. So that was, if I recall, that was the original driver for this. And then it kind of got lengthened all the way up to Eighth Avenue. Uh, but Sarah's right. I mean, on the other side of, once you get to McGowan or sidewalk all the way up on, uh, the east side, uh, so at least that sidewalk is already there. So it comes down to a, a lot of future discussion about sidewalks, which I look forward to, uh, having.
And did you say that there's still a potential that there'd be assessment? Or part, a part of the cost? No?
Nope.
No.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, what we're saying is as we're going through this, historically, the city hasn't been consistent. There's, there's been somewhere it's been assessed. There's been somewhere the city's done it as part of a project. There's been somewhere it's been kind of 50 50. And what we're saying is we need to drive clarity and establish a policy so that councils had a chance to give us that direction, formulate the policy so that when we come to projects like this, we're ready to go. Everybody.
Not this project, but future project.
This project and future projects, including the, the gaps, the, the gap study that we talked about, uh, to, with council several, uh, several meetings ago, safe for us to school type things, anywhere there's a sidewalk, as long as we've got a consistent policy that we understand how to roll it out.
So if, if, it's going to be simultaneous process or something so that if there, if we develop a policy that says uh, a certain portion, a certain percentage should be assessed.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That will, that will, uh, apply to this project?
That's, that's the goal. Yeah. Cause we're being responsive to the residents. They, they had the petition, staff worked, got it built into the budget. We're starting to do the staff work to it as we're getting, as we're getting along in the staff work. And, you know, And you know, as part of my check-ins with council, the questions are coming up, the how, how is this being done? Um, how are they paying for that? Who, what's the, what have we done in the past? So that's, we're getting to the point where we need to drive clarity on that. So we've got a consistent approach moving forward. So for this, um, this is just pretty much an update on a project. Here we are. This is one of the things that we've identified. And so what we want to do is come back to council and say, hey, look, we've been working on it. We heard about it. It's in the, it's in the C I P, we're progressing. But there's this other thing that we want to make sure you're aware of, that we gotta get to a point where we have that policy. So, so yeah, in parallel path, as we continue to work on the design and get ready for bid, we're also gonna be working with council and bringing forward the discussion points of a policy that so we can get that direction, so we can understand it and and apply it here uh as well as future projects. If council's direction is, you know what, let's get this part done, that phase one part done now, we'll need some direction in how we'd want to proceed. But we think that our recommendation is let us get that policy, let's start working on the policy. So we got some clear direction on this. Feel like I made that more confusing.
So Ryan, what, I'm, I'm gonna decode what's just been shared with us and correct me if I'm wrong. So there will be design work for this first phase. The Tavi Park phase is a, that work will continue and in parallel, the policy work will get done.
Correct.
And is it, is it our objective then to have the policy work done, have that buttoned up before construction starts?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so it um, I've talked with three or four residents who received the notification, Greg. And um I've been invited several times uh to chat with them. And I'm gonna use this briefing to uh circle back to them um because they just are, they're very worried about two aspects. Number one is that they're gonna have to pay a chunk of change for something that they don't want. And um, and I, you know, so I haven't been able, because of a lack of policy or awareness of what our past practice is, I really haven't effectively addressed that with them. But I do want them to understand that we're gonna be developing a policy. And um, so the other part of it is, is um um, I think it's more on the future phase, Eighth Avenue to uh um down to Eighth Avenue. I had the question, Mike, uh to you about which part would be more difficult due to conflicts. And I think it's that southern section, um just as I observe what's there and telephone poles and whatever. Uh, it's certainly the longer section, but th- this approach aligns with the expectations that have been shared with me relative to addressing access to Tavi Park. So I'm just, I'm really glad to hear that we're gonna uh get hot on policy development and let the design work go, continue on in the background. And then we, you know, then we'll have everything we need to know before construction starts. So, I don't know. I don't know that there was a question at all.
You, you summed it up really, really well, Grant. Thank you.
Grant, can I ask you that? You said you spoke of three residents. Were they between McGowan and Eighth or were they at the Tavi Park section?
Uh, both.
Both, okay. All three of them um were against?
I don't know that they're against um. You know, eh eh, let me, let me sort of typify uh what they, um, because they, they've all been long-term residents and they were kind of surprised, well, where's this coming from? And you know, I could, I could authoritatively speak about the Tavi section cuz people have said that to me at farmer's market, you know, and and so um yeah, I, so they're a little surprised, long-term residents, and then immediately it gets down to who pays. I mean, eh they go from, you know, first word to who pays. They really don't care about the middle. So our policy development um i- is absolutely paramount in this whole undertaking.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I'll just throw my two cents in on the whole, the whole picture of it. The, the Tavi Park section, I think, is key to do. And I'd be in favor of doing that like we, like it's planned, but the section from Eighth to to McGowan for half a million dollars in today's money, I can think of other sidewalk gaps and and needs for sidewalks in the city that are way more important than that section with already, because of mostly because of the sidewalk that's already on the east side the whole way down. So um, I wouldn't, I would like to see maybe that get shelved for other projects.
And we'll just see, you know, the phase two part of this will
Right.
Will compete with the other C I P items as, as we move forward.
Just saying that. That would be low priority for me. So is, is anyone opposed to what's being suggested or proposed in terms of how this is handled? Okay. Greg, is this your first time presenting?
Uh, second time.
Second?
I presented last year one time.
Okay, well, you did a good job.
Do you remember?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Greg. Um, just the, just a reminder, we'll have C I P discussion for council October, November, so that will, you'll see the initial list of the C I P submissions get input, so we can kind of fine tune it for the budget work session in January.
Okay. Next item is the agenda review. First item that's marked for discussion by staff is A six on, on the second page. Any item prior to A six that anyone would like to discuss? Rachel, A six, please.
Thank you. This is in relation to the um quarterly delinquent fee assessment process that's approved by council quarterly. Um, it was asked by council to look into um whether an administrative fee could be added. Um, city attorney and I looked at um what we had in our ordinance and previous resolutions. We found one from twenty eleven that named a specific employee as the designee to certify those fees and allowed for a five dollar administrative fee be added to utility invoices. Um, that five dollars is capped per state code. Um, so this resolution would be to propose um naming the city clerk as the designee, keeping that five dollar administrative fee for utility invoices and then adding a five dollar administrative fee plus postage at cost for all other unpaid invoices.
Questions? Go ahead. Has to do with the five dollar administrative fee. I would assume it costs more than five dollars, way more than five dollars to do that. Do we know how old that state law is that is just five dollars?
I'm not sure how old it is, but I could look that up and and let you know.
I mean, not necessary. It just, if you're new, it sounds like it might be something to talk to our state legislators about changing to where we're not losing a lot of money for actually doing, doing these.
We were estimating labor costs and post-it or paper postage was about fifteen to twenty dollars. So um, we're recouping some, but not all of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It'll cost more than that, more than that for Kara to get you the answer, so.
I know, I know.
Okay, Rachel, A seven?
So this is related to the um annual budget work sessions. Our current rule, resolution on file um calls out the fourth Friday in January to hold those meetings. Um, for twenty twenty five, that would be the same week as regular council meetings and looking forward that we would have that same issue um in several years coming forward. So we're recommending to change that resolution to be the last Friday in January um and following Saturday if needed. Um, so if council is in support, our next step after approving this resolution would be to improve, approve the entire twenty twenty five meeting calendar.
Okay, questions? Next item is uh under parks, C one. Prior to that, any, any items that's not marked? And anyone would like to discuss? All right, C one? Brent?
Sorry. This is a um resolution approving the uh the professional services agreement for the art piece in the um in the Central Plaza, this and authorizing payment in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions on that? We've had the presentation on the art piece. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Brent was, when this was presented to us, I remember we had some discussion about, you know, the uh historical and n- natural representation in the art piece and just and uh has there been any change in terms of the relative amount of referencing uh cultural reference to our history as a, as a railroad community? Has the design changed, I guess, is what I'm uh kind of interested in?
Yeah, no, as, as far as I'm, uh, as far as I know, uh, steering committee has not changed anything. The, the discussions have been the same as far as the amount of um that, I guess, the designs in the sculpture.
Okay, yeah, the one comment that I made was um the example that was shown to us showed the front end of the locomotive Union Pacific. And i- if we're gonna retain the locomotive, it needs to be Milwaukee Road. So, okay.
Sarah may be able to add something to that here, so on the committee?
Yes, I, I, I am not sure Nicole will have this information or maybe do Ryan, but um, when this is still the present, this is still the picture of the one that we saw. So this is not an updated um.
This is not what our sculpture is gonna look like.
Right, there's a lot of changes to this one. It still had to occur, but could have changed. But I believe the discussion on some of the railroad, it would be a lot more, um, it, it wouldn't be as prominent. This was looking to be more nature. Um, only because there will be such a prominent railroad um display on the depot and in the rest of the park. So, and then having Draper Park as well. So this was meant to be more of the, what you're seeing with the uh different kinds of leaves and natural look.
Councilman Menzies is correct. And one of the main reasons why we wanted to flag this is that uh when council got the presentation, we committed to council that as it progresses, we will have touch points with council, so you can see and and react to um what's, what's being developed so as to not get too far down um with that final design, so.
And I appreciate that very much.
And the sixty thousand was the budgeted amount for the project that was given to the committee when we were looking at submissions, because there, despite that being in the RFP, there were some that came in above that amount. So that was um also a critical point in looking at the finalist. But the sixty thousand was the budgeted amount, maybe that's changed, but from steering.
One, one quick, one quick additional question, though. Uh, will we get to see a small scale? Sample of what it's gonna look like? Like, we're often, we've, we, we get that.
I'll defer to, to council men's.
It was our understanding, yes, that we would have a small scale sample of that to hold and see and.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll talk and confirm and get that answer.
I mean, that's been common with other sculptures, we've, you know, that we've uh purchased. Okay. Go, go ahead. What, what was the timeframe for the completion and installation into the park?
Can I get back to you?
Yes.
I have the timeline. I printed it off, but I didn't bring it.
Yes, thank you.
It was, it was March.
Installation was March.
March installation.
Okay. Good memory. Okay, anything else? Thanks for that update. Okay, C two through D four are not marked. Any questions on those items? All right, D five, Mike?
Yeah, so I wanted to first highlight D four, um, just to rotate where the location of the fence was gonna go on the public works facility. Uh, so basically, on the right side of the page is Forty Fourth Street, which will be our main entrance there on the south side, just north of the pond. And then you can see the, the storage units and the other commercial buildings to our north. Um, so there'll be a, a fence that gets installed on the west side of Forty Fourth Street, north and south. Um, and then on our north boundary, and it goes at kind of an angle. So it's that you can see where all the arrows are pointing to the different locations and I can go up to the podium. So the fence will go up forty fourth along our north property line. And then it will, this is our existing facility right here. It will actually come south on our facility and then tie into the existing gates that we have there, where we close the system for our current drop-off facility. So it's a U shape with some jags in it to, to match our actual property line. So just wanted to make sure that council knew what we're doing with the fence.
Okay. Nice question. Yeah, go ahead. So there's no fencing on the south side?
So these properties here, there's timber and then this is wetland in here. Um, so it's not like we're gonna, if people wanna walk down that area, they probably could to go fishing or something when the ponds get stocked. But as far as vehicles, the main thing is to protect the area so that it's secure right now. Um, before we get our doors RFID, we have to leave them open during the day, so we can have random people come in there. So we wanna get the site secured.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
One quick question. You just mentioned the stocking that pond, which I'm sure that perked up Will's ears. Uh, but is this gonna, is that pond gonna be available for public fishing?
So only the small one by forty, or no, the other one is, is uh I guess I need to check the depth of it to make sure that they would survive, but.
So I was wondering.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be open during the weekends when we're not there.
Right.
It's gonna be a secured facility, so.
Yes, okay.
Okay. B five?
So D five, I wanted to highlight. Um, so as you recall, with the sanitary sewer study that we have, that's a nice guidepost to have. So I believe it's eighty-three million off the top of my head that that plan outlined for future growth. So with this, uh, we're looking to do the same thing with our storm sewer. So we're gonna look at what are those needs that we need where the areas part of town that don't have any storm sewer. Um, the storm sewer that we do have, is it big enough to serve the, the city and the residents? Um, are there areas that are flood prone that we need to put larger pipe in to take care of that? Um, are there ditches that need to be maintained in a different way? So it's not just sizes of pipe, but it's also developing standard operating procedures for waterways and taking all that into consideration and then taking that number and saying we need X dollars of improvements to happen, then we can import that in the DA Davidson model. And we can say our stormwater fee needs to be X. So there's a lot of processes that we can go and then we have a guidepost that actually gives us some data rather than just guessing. Because right now we spend about two hundred thousand dollars a year on drain tile. Is that really enough? Are we making a dent? I don't know, because I don't have a, a model that tells me what is it that that overall goal should be. So this way, we're not just flying with our blinders on, we have a plan and then we can attack it. So this is a multi-pronged approach. Uh, we had parks, public works, engineering um all evaluate. We had eight proposals that came in. We felt H G R, who happened to do the sanitary sewer study, uh, would present the best um for this. And so we're recommending approval with H G R. This is a multi-year project. Um, there's four hundred thousand dollars that's been budgeted towards this. And I'll take any questions about it.
Questions? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, just a statement. I mean, I, I think as city council people, we have all dealt with or received phone calls from individuals or neighborhoods that have had stormwater uh issues uh over the years. So to me, this seems like a lot of money, but I want people who are listening to this to understand this project, spending this money is absolutely essential and needed so that this city has a plan to know where the problems are, how to attack them and what the prioritization should be. So this is absolutely a good investment for everybody in this city because there are problem areas throughout the entire city, even if you think the northeast quadrant. Even if you think the northeast quadrant is a newer part of the city, they've got problems up there as well. So if you look at the older areas that have older pipes and different things going on, uh, this is throughout the city. When we have heavy rains, you know, you guys immediately attack areas that you know, uh, have problems, and so uh, to me, this is a, a very good investment for our citizens.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mike. All right.
Uh, C one, resolution adopting a, a Marion urban reforestation master plan. Uh, JBC will be giving a presentation on this on Thursday. And as well, uh, JBC did, uh, give the full presentation, uh, to the park board last Thursday at Loud Park. Questions?
Go ahead, Grant. Yeah, Brent, I just, um, I, I had looked at this plan. Uh, I was intrigued with page sixty-one, which laid out the phasing of the reforestation plan as well as anticipated costs. I had some, several questions regarding that. I just forwarded those to you, so if those, if you could take a look at those, or Mike can take a look at those, um, and, and address those as part of the presentation on Friday. They were more about just cost escalators, et cetera. Um, and, um, breakout between labor versus material, that being trees, so, anyway.
Yep, I'm actually looking at, at that right now.
Okay.
Do you have, uh, some preliminary answers to those, so we'll get to, um, the full, uh, full answers on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, do you want to go back and make sure if people had any questions on D six through D eight on the prior page, or D one through D four under the abstention agenda? Ask those now. Okay, thanks. All right, we'll go on then to, um, D one, under the regular agenda. Any questions on that? Okay, D two, Kara?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, counsel, this is an amendment that we're proposing to add a provision to our speed limit section. Um, that sets the speed limits for any streets that are not specified at twenty-five miles per hour. We currently don't have that, so we would have to go through and list some additional streets that aren't already covered in there. Additionally, we are looking at adding a provision that will set a speed limit for alleys at ten miles per hour. Um, in addition to that speed limit, um, the police would also have the option to enforce under our reckless driving code, so they would have two options for enforcing driving down alleys.
Okay, is that clear? Any questions, concerns? Okay, thanks, Kara. D three through E one are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those? Here we go, E two, Dave, and E three.
And Street, okay. Uh, yes, first item is, uh, on Thursday will be, um, have a resolution approving the renaming of portions of Tenth Avenue to Business Highway one fifty-one. We've identified three properties that actually use Tenth Avenue as an address out there, um, Ideal Windows, Hawkeye Auto, or Neil Motors, and, um, the Amaco Station out there on the corner. I have talked to all three property owners, uh, regarding the, regarding the address change. Again, what started this was as we rebranding, putting up the new street blade signs. Uh, we identified these three properties, and again, just to streamline the addressing, uh, we're going to clarify it from Thirty-Fifth Street, which is Hy-Vee, all the way to Highway thirteen, out to Walmart. Uh, and go to Business Highway one fifty-one. A lot of those businesses, the three that used Tenth Avenue, and a lot of the businesses use Business Highway one fifty-one, and Highway one fifty-one kind of interchangeably on their websites and addresses. So, uh, this will just clarify that street name, uh, from Thirty-Fifth, uh, to, uh, thirteen.
And what will it be exactly?
Business Highway one fifty-one.
Business Highway one fifty-one.
Correct. Correct.
How's that different from Highway one fifty-one? Just out of curiosity.
I'll defer.
Yeah, so Highway one fifty-one is a state-owned road. Business Highway is city-owned.
Okay, okay, it's good to know that.
Um, just so the council knows, we did do, uh, three notices to the property owners affected it in red. I say three properties, but there's about ten addresses out there, uh, so they've been well notified. Uh, and then we did two notices to everybody else, um, that might have a Highway one fifty-one address, again, just to clarify it. Um, and then the Chamber, um, did reach out, Sue Tate, I believe called about every address they had on file. Uh, let them know it was changed, if they had questions to, uh, contact me, so.
Questions for Dave? All right, E three, Dave, all right.
Thank you. All right, uh, on Thursday, uh, Mr. Georgian of Georgian Auto Services, uh, will be in attendance. He is requesting a waiver from the moratorium ordinance, uh, to permit a auto repair, minor or minor auto repair shop be located at fifty-eight hundred Linear Avenue. This is the old Spray Land location. Uh, building's been vacant for almost six months now plus. Um, he'd like to bring in auto repair shop to Marion. He currently operates one in Manchester. Uh, of course, this is in the Development Overlay District that was approved along Highway thirteen. That did include auto repair minor services. Quite a lengthy definition in the code. But what it essentially is, is your Goodyear, your Firestone in Cedar Rapids, Anderson Automotive, et cetera. That's the type of mine, that's what a minor auto repair business is. Uh, it does not allow auto body repair, uh, so your Quality Autos or your, um, yeah, your Quality Auto type business or Performance, uh, not Performance Concepts, but the auto rebuilder on Lions Lane. It does have some additional conditions that no vehicle can sit outside for longer than five days. That's an existing condition in the code. So again, he is going to be asking for a, a waiver, uh, as council recalls, that was something that was, um, brought up during the establishment of the moratorium, that individuals could come forward and, and request a, uh, request that waiver to establish a business. Um, again, the moratorium, uh, is in place to allow the, uh, completion of the comprehensive plan that is still targeted for, um, March to have a, that kind of final draft in our hands. Um, and, you know, of course, we've had some discussions regarding the future of the moratorium that expires in November. Uh, we are recommending, uh, denial of, of the request at this time, again, just to allow the, um, comprehensive plan to continue to work through, uh, its process.
Sarah?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you for that, and I think that's it's the first thing I see is this is like, this is a gateway, this is one, this is like literally one of the main corridors we're talking about in the comprehensive plan, even though we're talking about all of them. I mean, this is, uh, this is one of our most prominent.
Entry.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for that update, thank you for that information, but in case any of my colleagues are wondering where I was on that, that's, I wholeheartedly would support the fact that we just hold off till we figure out where this comprehensive plan, and even our zoning within the comp plan gets discussed.
Anyone else?
Oh, yes, Brian, sorry.
Really quick, um, just looking ahead. Uh, staff has put together a timeline to come back before council on the moratorium. Uh, we've, we've talked to the council subcommittee, so staff will be having a recommendation on what does that look like? What's, what's the recommendation moving forward with the moratorium as we continue to work on the comprehensive master plan? So that will be coming, Dave, next round of council?
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, uh, next, the next work session will have a, uh, uh, discussion regarding that, and on Thursday, we'd likely have a, uh, ordinance, um, extending the moratorium. And that'll take three readings.
Go ahead.
So, Dave, in essence, you're recommending that we not approve this at this time, let the moratorium process come to conclusion, and within that, this kind of request may or may not be, uh, permitted or allowed, is that?
The comprehensive plan will lay out the guidance for a potential zoning code update. Regardless, the comprehensive plan comes back and says this should be zone commercial. It is own commercial today, and it is an allowable use today, so the comprehensive plan would have to make a recommendation to amend the zone ordinance to identify these types of businesses as a permitted use. We still would have to come in and amend the zoning code. Uh, that's the tool. The com- the comprehensive plan is the toolbox. The zoning ordinance is the tools, uh, to implement the comp plan.
In, in this delay that you're recommending or not addressing it at this time, it's, does this compromise, um, this gentleman's, um, expansion of his business? Does this jeopardize that? I'm, I'm kind of just understand, wanting to understand from his perspective the criticality of this decision right now.
Mr. Georgian will be here Thursday. I'd rather he ask that. I think he should answer that question. I, I don't know all his specifics exactly, uh, but this would prohibit him from, um, operating at this time. Uh, what his ultimate plans are, I'd really like him to, uh, present that to the council.
Yeah, okay, well, I just, knowing that that's situated next to the outdoor storage area, uh, just to the south, uh, of that storage area, which I think is just pristine property. Being a little facetious there.
Anyway, okay, thanks.
If, Mayor, if I can, just to add a little commentary, because this is, this is when council was talking about the moratorium. I mean, really, the, this, the moratorium is the tool for the council to make sure, catch inner breath, let the appropriate process play out with the comp plan. And to ensure that, um, as things are coming in those key quarters, like, uh, Councilman Menzer had mentioned, is this the vision that the council had in mind? And, um, when we, when we established the moratorium, we did say anything that's coming through, um, they have the right, they have that, that ability to come and, and, and request that waiver for council, so I just, this is, this is working in, in the manner that it was intended to. Um, and our process is playing out, and we're going to come back to council, uh, next round of council meetings to lay out the calendar. Um, to, to kind of bring closure on when we're going to bring everything to close, but, um, I mean, it may be inconveniencing for the property owners or the people seeking to purchase that, but at the, at the end of the day, it does give council that, that authority to make sure that what's going in matches what, um, what the vision is for that.
Any questions or? All right. Okay, that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted by the code. And we have the council's legal statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one J.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Vote call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Appelosely?
Yes.
Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved, and we are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you.